All right, I'll call the order, the Town and Mountain Desert Planning Board Meeting for September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Welcome aboard. Here we are. And Heidi is pointing at the sign in sheet. If you haven't signed in, please sign in. Let's kick it off with some introductions. I'm Chairman William Hanley. We've got Meredith Randolph, Tracy Loftus Keller, Dave Ashmore, and Alan Kimerly are the voting members of the board, and we've got new alternate member Gail Marshall aboard too. And I always give my planning board plug to, we've got one position available on the board. We've got an alternate position. If anybody's interested, feel free to contact the town office. And with that, I'll say hello to everybody out in the Zoom world. Hello. Hopefully by now, we all know Zoom protocol and we've got our mics off. And if you are joining us on Zoom, please sign in on chat. So we've just got a record of who's attending. And even though the proceedings are being recorded, it just helps Heidi stitch it all together in the minutes. And then, of course, Zoom is for participation and we're not having side conversations and chat. And thank you for joining us online and in person. And two, I wanted to just clarify to that relative to the voting members of the board, we've got, there was a typo on Alan's application we received from the town indicating he wanted to be an alternate member. We, after we voted him on, the Board of Selectmen voted him on as an alternate member. Talking to Alan, he, you know, he indicated, well, wait a second, I wanted to be a voting member of the board. So we went, I made the board had a finding. I went back to the Board of Selectmen, made the request that Alan be, you know, changed to a voting member, full-time member on the board. And so here he is. That that hiccup corrected. So good to have you here. And then, right after Alan came on as a voting member of the board, then we had an application from Gail. Gail's, we've board made the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that Gail be brought on as an alternate member. Yeah, Board of Selectmen voted so, and we have Gail joining us now as a alternate member on the board. And let's, let's get going here. So second item on the agenda tonight, we've got some minutes and we've got the minutes from August ninth to approve. And Heidi, I had two things on the minutes. If, if I'm not mistaken, the call to order was actually at six ten P M. And then I can't, I saw it earlier and of course now as I'm digging through it, but there was a there was a line in here about a comment from somebody in the audience about cars and car pollution and you mentioned they were unnamed. That was Mark Cannon. And that's the
Just notice that the thing that the first is in the notes, second. The
Oh, right.
It's all the information there. It just was, we voted to reverse the order. And the minute notes are written up in the order of the agenda. I usually do it that way because it's very, I put the vote in that this is how we did it in this order. But I usually do it, I stick with the agenda because otherwise we have things everywhere. But if there's a better way, I'm happy to do that.
Anything else on the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of August nine.
Tracy Keller will second that.
Yes, amended.
As amended.
Yep.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor? Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Alan?
Well, Alan Kimerly.
Well, Alan, Alan wasn't participating that meeting, my mistake. And William Hanley, aye. I'm so used to looking for you guys on Zoom.
Did we already prove that or do we need to put this also?
One more thing, which is a protocol thing, with all of you in the room together, not needing to do that. You can just do a vote.
That's correct.
Not person by person. We're used to person by person.
I think that's the first time in like two and a half years that's happened.
Three years.
Three years.
It's a long time, yeah.
But yeah, no, thanks Heidi too. It's, you know, it's not on the agenda, but I believe we had minutes from August twenty-third as well.
I was not here.
So it was Tracy, myself, Dave. And I think at that hearing, we at that hearing, did we bring Alan on as a voting member or was he still an alternate?
That was still an alternate.
Yeah, so it was just us three. Yeah.
Tracy Keller, I make a motion to approve the August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three meetings as presented.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
There we go.
Congratulations.
It was a momentous occasion. All right, let's no more minutes. Let's soldier on here. So item three tonight, we've got Planning Board Proceedings Policy, and it's relative to the rules for use of cell phones, rules for photos, filming and taping during Planning Board Proceedings. So this came up at the last hearing. If those of you who weren't aware, as there was question about what is that policy, policy for photographing photos during the hearing, recording hearings, you know, how do we handle that? What's the town's policy on that? So and there was a specific request from the public to clarify that. So we, we consulted with the town attorney, Andy Hamilton. We came up with a draft policy for that and the board members have that policy before them. And I just, you know, for the record, if you can bear with me as I read as I read through that policy, you know, let's, if there's any discussion with the board, let's have it and hopefully have a motion and binding on that. So bear with me. So we have the Town and Mountain Desert Planning Board Rules for Cell Phones, Photos, Filming and Taping During Planning Board Proceedings. First point was that the Chair notes that the main Freedom of Access Act specifically authorizes the public to record proceedings in order to promote government transparency. Second point was, however, the Board and its Chair must maintain order in these proceedings. The Board has ample authority to provide for an orderly meeting without disruption. Accordingly, the Chair lays out the following guidelines regarding members of the public using phones to photograph or record the meeting. Third point was the placement use of television, video cameras, still cameras, motion picture cameras, cellphone cameras, microphones or other sound or video recording devices or equipment at the board hearings for the purpose of recording the proceedings will be regulated by the Chair so as to avoid interference with the conduct of the hearing. And fourth point was, to that end, the Chair requests that members of the public please place all cell phones on mute and stow cell phones so they're not disruptive during the meeting. That's been a longstanding board policy.
Before you go to the next one, Mr. Chair, will you make sure the public understands that this has been revised? This next bullet since the last meeting and since copies were available, both Mr. Millstein and his counsel, Attorney Goldman, are present in this meeting, and I just want to make sure that they both are aware that some of Attorney Goldman's suggestions have been incorporated into this next bullet.
Okay, thank you. And bullet five was that if the Chair determines that the writing, taping, filming or broadcasting of a Planning Board proceeding creates an unreasonable risk of interfering with that proceeding, the Chair may direct any person or persons engaged or proposing to engage in any of those activities to confine themselves to a designated part of the meeting room in which the proceeding is held. These directives may include, but are not limited to instructing and directing such persons to sit or stand along the left side of the meeting room, left side from, as the Chair faces the room, left side of the meeting room and not facing or standing in front of any person flip that facing or standing in front of any person in the audience or any member of the public who wishes to address the board. The Board further asks that any member of the press or other members of the public present at a public meeting be considerate of one another. The Chair requests that flash photography be kept to a minimum. And then the last point is just, you know, asking for a motion to adopt these time and manner rules for the conduct of these proceedings and the second. So any board discussion on this one?
In reasonable to me. I would make a motion to adopt these time and manner rules for the conduct for the proceedings.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Adopted. Okay. That was item three on the agenda. Item four on the agenda. We have subdivision approval application. This is continued from August ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. We had a public hearing at six, it says six oh five, it's technically six ten. And this is subdivision oh oh two, two thousand and twenty-three. Owner name is Mount Desert three sixty-five. Agent is Greg Johnston, G F Johnston Associates. Location is by Manchester Road, Northeast Harbor, tax map twenty-three, lot twenty-five. Zoning district is Village Residential One, and the purpose is subdivision as defined is the construction or placement of three or more dwelling units on a single tract or parts of land within a five-year period. The proposal is the construction or placement of six dwelling units on a single tractor parcel of land within a five-year period. It is workforce housing. And let's first clarify who's voting on this application tonight. As Alan kind of just joined the board as a voting member. Gail just came on as an alternate member. I'm going to ask that you guys join us in the audience on this one. And the voting members are Meredith, Tracy, myself and Dave Ashmore. So want to make that clear. And we've got town attorney Andy Hamilton joining us tonight and just first kind of kick it off with a summary of where we're at the proceedings and where we're at the proceedings is we are in the final stages of subdivision review. And the final stage of subdivision review is compliance review. And subdivision review has several steps. We've already passed through. It all starts with sketch plan review. Sketch plan review is just kind of the preliminary discussion about the project presentation. It's really an informal presentation of project. From sketch plan, we go to completeness review. Completeness review is where we're just kind of drilling down through the checklist of required submittals. We've done that. After completeness and we found the application complete, we, and then after that, then we held a public hearing. That's pretty self-explanatory. Public hearing is for the public. Everybody's available to ask questions, discuss, you know, we've done that, waded through that, public hearing is closed. So we're beyond the point of public comment now, and now we're into
We are unmuted. We need to be muted, Larry. We just got a message, please unmute.
Please.
They're calling us now. You're screaming. I'm so pleased with you.
I was, I was told to project more at the last hearing, so you're getting what you're asked for. All right, so what was I saying? So we're, here we are, compliance review. Compliance review. This is the board's time to deliberate, wade through the specific review criteria we're tasked with reviewing, staying on target, following the ordinances we're tasked with to review. And what those are is we're wading through the subdivision ordinance. We're wading through the land use ordinance. Section six specifically, and then we have the state statute forty-four oh four to review. Right now, where it stands from August ninth, we got through the last section of the subdivision ordinance reviewed was section five point one, buffering and screening. Our next task for review is section five point two of the land use ordinance. And you know, I'll read that shortly, but I know that
Now, I'm unmuted. I'm unmuted. I'm unmuted now.
Just, just, there you go. You got it. Okay, so before we get into section five point two on the review to-do list, I know that Andy, you wanted us to just clarify.
How about now? I mean, muted now?
That's pretty nimble.
The joys of Zoom. Andy, I know that you wanted us to clarify one point on
Sure.
section five point one.
I'll speak to this directly briefly. The boards is a three-step process. The Chair reviews the standard in full. Then a member of the board calls out the evidence that you're relying upon for your finding, and then there's a motion as to your finding as to the, as to the review standard. So be sure to call out the evidence that you're relying upon for your finding. Thank you.
Got it. And where we had a finding on that, our evidence on that finding was the submitted site plan in the buffering plan indicating the scope of the buffering. All right. Thanks, Andy. So with that, perhaps before we get into section five point two, I'll just ask the applicant if there's any opening statement?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just say that we agreed to the good letter filed forward by the CEO, allowing for the status procedure. I'd like to recognize that Captain Miller is available via Zoom tonight as well as our traffic engineer, Diane Morbiot, and the rest of our conservative board. So
Okay. Bear with me during story time again. So section five point two of the subdivision ordinance. So that is conformance with other laws and regulations. And what that states is that the proposed subdivision shall be in conformance with all pertinent state or all pertinent local state and federal ordinances, statute, laws and regulations. Says if the proposed subdivision meets the definition of a subdivision as designed and defined in the Site Location Act, the subdivider must secure the approval of the State Board of Environmental Protection as well as the board. When a proposed subdivision requires approval of the board and the board and the Board of Environmental Protection, each review may be conducted independently. And the board may deny approval of the subdivision, even though the Board of Environmental Protection has granted approval under the provisions of the Site Location Act. If I'm not mistaken, Andy, this one does not require the State Board of Environmental Protection review.
That's what the applicant, the application states, and it's been offered in the evidence, but if the board has any questions for the applicant or any other party, the board can ask questions as to that. But I believe that could be correct, Mr. Chair.
So, you know, just following the language in five point two, you know, in conformance with the pertinent local state and federal ordinances, I understand that we're going to work with the local ordinance first and what that relative local ordinance is first is the Town and Mountain Desert Land Use Ordinance, and that is specifically section six of the land use ordinance. And flipping to section six in the land use ordinance. And I would think the board is quite familiar with section six now after all these years. And so just for the record and put into context here, section six standards for uses, permits and approvals. The land use standards in this ordinance shall be applied to permit as well as conditional uses in all zoning districts. And what, we are starting with section six A general performance standards. And within section six A, we, the first one is section six A one compatibility. And what we have here is it talks about that the proposed use shall be compatible with the permitted uses and within the district in which it is located as measured in terms of its physical size, visual impact, proximity to other structures and density of development. Yeah, and here we are. So let's let's follow this in order. So you know, what the board has been doing to is that we've been having findings of fact and conclusions of law for each section of review. We've only managed to make it through, I think, section five point one so far. So in review of this section, and I would expect we're going to have the findings of fact and conclusion of law on it. And however, we've got a couple different aspects of compatibility to discuss. And the first one we're talking about tonight is physical size. And Andy, in the context of physical size, we're talking about the physical size of the proposed structures, the physical size of the entire development in the context of, of what the application actually is. And here we have a
Because this is a developmental subdivision, it's both aspects, Mr. Chair and members of the board. It's both the physical structures either located or to be located on development as well as the overall of both. And there was evidence in the application. There's been argument by both applicant and by counsel for interested persons as to the considerations in six A one, the compatibility standards. But to start where you started, it is both the physical buildings now located or to be located plus if you will, the scale of the development.
So we've got a series of residential structures.
As I said, the houses themselves are reasonable, normal-sized, compatible-sized buildings.
The scale, yeah. I would agree with that. I think they're, they are residential structures in a residential area of town in a residential zone. You know, we, it's evidence on the final plot plan submitted, the you can see it pretty clearly on the L one plan from the applicant. We've got one existing one existing single-family residence, and then they are proposing three other new structures. Two of those structures are two are two family structures. And there's also an existing garage on the property and relative to the, this, you know, the dimensional size of the existing structure and the existing garage, the proposed structures seem relative in scale in height, width, area. Any comment, Dave, on that? Well, should we talk a little bit about the physical size of the development?
Should we just assess that under density development? Because I think we're going to end up discussing the same thing twice.
I, I think so. I think the physical size of the development, I would want to just clarify and perhaps Andy could chime in too, is just the dimensional the dimensions of the proposed total development, you know, where, you know, the you know, the lot size or lot area as bordered by the the property lines. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's not a twenty-acre lot in a, in one acre zoning or vice versa. I mean, it's, it's the lot size as seen on, in the submitted plans and broader.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. In and relative to the budding properties, I mean, the lot is scaled to what you're seeing in that area and directly abutting it and within a thousand feet of it. I mean, a little bit on the smaller side, in some cases relative to broader lots in the area. So it, it doesn't seem like dimensionally there's a lack of compatibility. So let's soldier on. So then visual impact, so the the applicant has submitted a number of renderings and imagery and of what the proposed structures are going to look like, what the buffering and screening is looking like, what, you know, what's the, just the visual you know, presentation of the project is going to be, if you guys have any comment on that? You know, it's all residentially, you know, residential visuals. I mean, we've got porches and houses and you know, familiar visuals.
I remember a simple, I'm sorry. There was a point which the discussion that they were going to use modular homes and there was comment that they hadn't committed to anybody, but they found a company that they felt was in keeping. So I'm just wondering, Meredith, do you speak up? Sorry, but the do they know for sure that they're, what the houses will look like? Have they committed to the company that you're going to use? Are the images going to remain accurate or are they just houses and they'll look quite
That a question?
Yes.
So visually, as we presented in the package, both in the renderings and the shapes in the site plan are consistent. How those buildings are built and who the actual builder is is undetermined. For or not following the application that visually presented, those remain accurate.
So there's covered porches and you know, familiar siding and windows and, you know, typical residential elements and all scaled to the scale of the proposed dimensional scale of the proposed buildings.
It doesn't seem like it's going to stand out as being different than what's in the neighborhood.
Yeah, speak up, Dave.
It doesn't seem like it's, it's going to be different than in style than what's in the neighborhood.
I just caution everyone that they may have views, but I don't think there should be comments or laughter or celebration in response to any comment that anybody makes. The planning board is in deliberations. It has to be able to do its deliberations without disruption. So please, if you could hold.
Proximity to other structures. So Andy, I would assume again, Proximity to other structures, so Andy, I would assume again, this is relative to. Considerations on site and within. The area of consideration beyond the site. So. So one thing I would uh just put in context to is the area consideration of the project, you know, relative to. Um subdivision applications and. Conditional use applications um. In terms of the context of those applications, they're two different. Context within subdivisions, we're notifying everybody within a thousand feet. Of the proposed development and within conditional use applications, we're notifying the direct debotters. So you know subdivisions, I mean, they're they're typically bigger, they typically have broader reach and. Impact hence the larger context of them, so you know in. My consideration of when we're talking about. Context, we're talking about context within a thousand feet of the of the proposed development. So with with that, you know, proximity to other structures, so we've got um. Technically, we've got five structures on the property. So why why don't we? Talk a little bit about the proximity to other structures on the property. Uh, two of those structures are existing structures, we've got the. Original heel house and we've got the original garage that served that house. And then um the three other new proposed structures.
The code in terms of the relationship of structures is. Uh, is that just shoreline that we come across that no more than twenty feet? Or is that all, that's the town, right, that they don't allow primary structures to be that? It can be everywhere. But the the code says twenty.
Yeah. Perhaps Greg, you could talk a little bit about the placement of the structures on the property.
So we would say that the closest structures um. No two structures, the closest to the near the bottom. Um, and then for dimensional requirements as Meredith was saying, the town has developed standard of. Principal and principal building setbacks. Uh, I believe it's twenty or maybe twenty five might turn to it. Um, but it meets the dimensional standards of of that. Um, which the order is set by both of the people. Um, furthermore, towards the, I would say, across the public way. Um, neighborhood road, uh, the nearest structure, there were considerations on moving the driveway based on comments early on. Um, it's another driveway, maybe it's a structural, I think it's been um consideration of that and particularly. The sideline setback towards uh neighborhood road has not been pressed with the structure, so. In that in that term, the mental stance to the to the nearest structure offsite, I think, if we consider it in the plan. And 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 they're greater than the commoned.
So, you know, relative to the. You know, so it's been evidenced in the plan submitted that. Relative to the dimensional standards of the property that the proposed structures are meeting the proximity to adjacent structures. For the for the plans noted. Any comment on that? None, so I think the 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 meat of the matter is then the last one, the. The density of development and just. Again, to put this, you know, in further context. The board has received more correspondence relative to the density of development. Than any other correspondence we've received to date and this project um in my. Eight years of chair, ten years on the board. Received the most correspondence of any application we've ever reviewed and. You know, to characterize the correspondence about it, you know, it's it's overwhelmingly. Positive in general. It's. Definitely not correspondence, you know, that's. Shallow or not my backyard correspondence, it is informed correspondence concerned about the density of development. And it is not um correspondence that. We don't want this here, go somewhere else, this is it's overwhelmingly, this is too much on too little. And. As the board's primary. Task is to represent the residents of the town, I think we really need to parse the stence the development. Question because it's obviously a major question that's being asked and um. And again, within the context of the application, we need to be, you know, mindful of that, you know, we're not talking about. The direct debotters, we're talking about what, you know. Specifically within a thousand feet of the application. And. What does that mean? You know, what do you see in the area? What's in that district? What's, you know? What's there? Lots primarily single family residences, there is primarily. You know, primary residence, sometimes you'll see an accessory s- an accessory dwelling unit or accessory. Structure, you'll see, you know, you maybe even a garage, you know, so. And usually it's all. You know, single family related. People on the property, um, but we're we're talking about density of development here, we're talking about how much. How much is being proposed to be constructed on this site, so we're what's being proposed to be constructed on site, well. Three new structures, two of them are duplexes.
Do you think we have to recognize in the context of it that there's a relationship between? It being affordable. That this is to be. Workforce housing.
Absolutely.
Part of the reason why they're trying to get so much on there. Is to make it. More affordable, um, that there's a relationship there. Uh, but my my concern is. Well, one of my concerns or thoughts has been that there's been a lot of discussion of the subdivision having an allotment, uh, the increase in. How much density for workforce housing there is, and then there's also the discussion that the town. Created that um allowance for secondary structures has also been referenced. And I just wonder whether the town. Ever meant for the two. Not that they're using both. But they sort of become part of the same argument that, oh, well, they could have. Actually even had more houses on there if they used both, and I think maybe the loser board needs to go back and look at that because I think. He developed the subdivision over here and said, oh, we should do something to make sure we have workforce housing. And then people said, well, we wanna have apartments and in-law apartments allowed on our properties, that was sort of a separate thought. Um, and that they shouldn't be. Uh, that maybe didn't lose it just simply, I don't think anybody intended for it to be. Kind of compounded like this, but I don't. Uh, I think. And I I just, I'd like to review. The numbers in the way that we got here again because.
I I think there's a qualitative and a quantitative discussion that needs to be had here. And that's why I was talking about context and in in the qualitative. Review and quantitatively, there's numbers here we need to process.
And I think the discussion of workforce housing, because a lot of the complaints. Didn't have a sort of a recognition of. There is a relationship between the amount of land that you get and the value of your property and that is. There has to be some some forgiveness for. That they need to put put, this can't just be a one house lot and be workforce housing, that's too big of an area. It would be pretty hard to get that house to be workforce housing with that much. Land and everything, so. I guess I just, there were often letters that I read that I didn't, I didn't see a recognition of, we understand you need to. Put more houses on that than have been there to make it workforce housing. But then we can still discuss the density. For those that are listening and have complained, just like that recognition as well, that you're trying to do workforce housing here, you can't. Give them an acre and a half or.
So in the context of workforce housing and the quantitative. Discussion about density of development, you know, they're they're getting a a density bonus.
Right.
For it being workforce housing where they're getting the the seventy five percent multiplier um on the um. The. The allowable. Um, area of development on the property and, you know, I think that um. You know, looking, you know, the the applicant presented. Um, their calculations for that as well as um. The opposition's attorney Grady Burns submitted that and you know, there's some. There there's some very clear quantitative calculation there about how many. Um, structures are permissible there and there's a discrepancy between those two calculations and um. Andy, I don't know if you would find it useful, but I'd like to hear from the appi- applicant just to explain their calculations. And I'd like to hear one more time from Mr. Burns about um. Their calculations.
Just just to um take off with where you as a board are going. Um, I think we're being very thoughtful as to the six A one compatibility density of development criteria. And I've been struggling myself. Between provisions like five point seven point three of the subdivision ordinance. In conjunction with six A one, I know the chair is using yet another provision of the subdivision ordinance, which I think you do have to apply. Uh, relating to the Brentwood, so. Uh, yeah, I think it's helpful to drill down onto this specific standard. In part because it is the objective standard, I would give the caution that the qualitative aspect of density of development. Is something that I know the chair has great. Expertise with, but I would ask the board not to spend too much focus on qualitative. And try to focus on the quantitative. In part as a means to inform the quality, but you're right in there in terms of what you should be doing, so I think, yes, it's appropriate to hear from. Both the applicant and uh from counsel for the interested parties. And then the board should return to its discussion of both uh aspects of density of development, I think this is a core. Um, consideration under your review standards. Uh, in both the subdivision and the land, so so toggle them as you go.
Okay, I hear you.
Yep.
Greg.
Sure, so uh I think fundamentally, um, the difference of being whether you round out or round up. Um, the land use order is clear that says in workforce housing, um, that you use the entire parcel. That doesn't mean you start at thirty thousand square feet and remove the nine hundred square feet we have in the calculation. That's that's clearly there, um, and I also think I just want to remind the board that. Really what we're talking about is what is our district and um. The board over here is really the best to do that, but.
Yeah.
We are district.
Could you bring that up here, please?
And so you can see the the Senate Manchester.
Can you hold it? Yeah, so everybody can see it. So the public can see it too, you know.
So you can see.
And then don't stand them. Yeah.
The property.
Yeah.
You can see these are all the buildings in the district and where. It is dense and less dense, and I think that needs to be taken in context of the density question related specifically to the district. You can see what's on the outway, now how close those structures are together versus. This, oops, excuse me. Our site and how it um compares to all the buildings in the site, so I just wanna make sure. We're not confusing where the district line is along Manchester.
And again, for the record, could you state the district?
The the village residential district.
Yeah.
Can I, do you mind if I added to that?
Then go for it, no.
I do think it's an important distinction to try to make that section six A one actually talks about compatibility of permitted uses within. The district, so it's not, I I think I heard. Mention of on thousand feet, that's just who you notice based on subdivision application. It's how compatibility question relates to the district in which it's owned. So that's a really important distinction because you can't compare a shoreline residential district. And the goals of the shoreline residential district. With a village residential district, the the standards and the goals of those just described spelled out in the ordinance. It describes the village residential one district as being the area where dense development is supposed to happen. And the reason why there's a distinction is because that's the place that the town wants. Denser of development to be, they don't want it to be in other. Districts, so the density question as it relates to compatibility within the district, I think we've already. Submitted some evidence that shows if you look around. Village residential one district, there are areas of that district. Where the density is compatible to what we. So I think we spread that either in our supplemental. Record or at the beginning of the application process, so I think. Number one, that's a really important question. And then also a really important question as you're getting to is how you calculate density on this specific.
Could you walk us through that, please?
You can, I'll try.
You guys may want to turn to um. Question five seven three in the subdivision orders. I think we reference in uh language there, some guide to confirmation.
Yeah, I've outlined it in our summary of density calculations, it was part of this.
So why don't we have that section open and from a dope um. This middle on.
And speak up guys, so.
This middle on July fourteenth has a summary in it. That you guys will have in your package, please, Gary, would you like to explain and? Um, I know reading of numbers would mean that we unless just game them, so we all have those up.
What tab we got here?
Um, it would be the supplemental, so middle, uh, you know, and the tab would be the July fourteen.
Which which page?
For the end, right before the overpart, so just click to the end.
Forty two.
Yeah, got it.
So to start off, everybody there, I mean, if you find that we have the numbers.
Forty two.
So the summary of density numbers are there, but what guides you first is five seven three. That says overall net densities shall be determined by the total number of proposed on the site. And the total acres including open spaces and recreational areas and before. Workforce housing subjects, the total area, so if that's the overriding standard. Then you can, we can get into the numbers that are in the summary, which um. You hopefully have found page forty two.
Yes.
Okay, no, you wanna?
Yep, so again, uh, the the background on the property is it's an existing lot with point nine zero acres. That includes the point one one acre um right away. So first we have to establish the net density. Um, what's required under section five one one six point two point two. For the purposes of that, as as Greg mentioned, we're including the entire parcel. That gives us a density of. Three point nine lots and six dwelling units, so you have to keep going back to the fact that you could actually have. As a base density of this property, six dwelling units in in duplexes or we did a three lot subdivision, you can still get. You still get six units.
So just to just to clarify, the, you know, we're talking about thirty nine thousand two hundred and four square feet.
Yep.
And the minimum lot size allowable in that district is ten thousand square feet.
Yep.
And you're arriving at um three. And you're arriving at um three point nine lots and six dwelling units.
Correct.
And I think that's in forty-three in the ordinance where it states sixty M. For each one and two family dwelling unit, six P eleven. For each one and two family dwellings, the dimensional requirements are three point five shall be met. Reach one or two family dwelling unit. So the base density there is six.
So you're getting that. Can you talk about the bonus, Noel?
Sure. So to setting aside the the number of dwelling units that we could have on this property, uh, basically step number one is to determine the lot area of the subject lot. So we can all agree it's thirty-nine thousand uh two oh four. We're using the entire lot based on the provisions of the subdivision ordinance. Then you have to determine what what the minimum lot size is in that district. And as the chairman just mentioned, uh, for a VR one district, we publish where the minimum lot area is ten thousand square feet. Then you determine the density bonus percentage increase under the subdivision ordinance, five point one, six point two, point two. If we're proposing up to uh a hundred percent of the if we're proposing a hundred percent of the development, the units are for workforce housing, you get a seventy-five percent density bonus. You can calculate that by taking um forty-three thousand, you can calculate it by taking forty-three thousand five sixty-one divided by point nine zero. That's how you get your base density, the the size of the lot, right?
Yeah.
A point nine acre lot multiplied by um less than acre is thirty-nine thousand. Then you multiply that by one point seven five, which is the lot plus the density bonus.
A hundred and seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent, which gives you sixty-eight thousand six oh seven. And sixty-eight thousand six oh seven divided by ten thousand square feet is six point nine units. If we even took out the point one one right of way, we still have an end result of six point oh two units. That's for the workforce housing. But it's important to use the square footage of the entire block rather than other ways to think about it. That's what the ordinance asks you to do.
That calculation is on page forty-four, the July fourteenth submittal. Okay, so you guys are at six units. Can can we talk a little bit about what's the composition of the units? You know, composition of the units being um we've got, we've got to flip back to the site. Yeah. So the the heel house is a single family residence. The the structure, the struc- structure on the corner is consisting of home one and home two. That's a duplex unit. The 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 structure, home four off Neighborhood Road is um a single family unit. And then um home five and home six is another duplex unit. Um, just as we're on numbers, um, and I think Kathy spoke to this at one of the earlier here hearings is um, I think during the public hearings, there was a question about um, can you can you, for the record, talk about um, like the number of bedrooms and the number of people in these structures potentially?
Starting with the heel house.
Starting with the heel house.
Do you want me to do that?
Yes, yes.
The heel house is three bedrooms. The other single family home would be three bedrooms. The duplexes would each consist of one side with three bedrooms and one side with two bedrooms. And we actually made that change from our initial plan because uh we heard people's concerns about how many people might be living there. And so we adjusted it. So we have two of them are smaller with just two bedrooms rather than three.
Eight, ten.
You walk back through that.
Yeah. Yeah. So we've got um Kathy, correct me if I'm mistaken. So you said on the heel house, that's home three. We've got three bedrooms. Home, home one appears then that it's two bedrooms. Home two, which is bigger and part of the same duplex is three bedrooms. Home four, the single family home is three bedrooms. And then um, home five is three bedrooms and home six is two bedrooms. And so we're talking about six, eight, ten, sixteen bedrooms.
Correct.
And um and I believe again in the pub- previous public hearing, uh, there is a total number of people that could be potentially housed in in these developments in the sixteen bedrooms. And if I'm not mistaken, that was thirty-two.
We had stipulated in our uh documentation here that we asked that as people purchase these homes and first move in, the household composition is one to two people per bedroom. So if it's a two bedroom home, we'd like to have two people living in there as a minimum. If uh but as a maximum, the larger units of three bedrooms, the the total would be six people. So no more than two people in a bedroom.
So in the three bedroom, in the four three bedroom homes, there's potentially two people per bedroom.
Correct.
And so that's three, six.
We'll say that the reality we are finding four families workforce that are five person families. It doesn't seem to me that it's that common to have three kids.
Or four children.
Yeah.
Yeah, what?
Six.
Right, four children.
Mm hmm. So.
Yeah, three.
Three.
Four, four children. Yeah.
So yet you have.
Four children seems to me extremely rare. I know some three children, but.
Six, nine, twelve, three, four. So you know, the reality of it is, I mean, you could potentially have twenty-four people in the four three bedroom homes and in additional uh, two, four in the two four total, two in home one and home six. Is am I reading that right or is it? That's eight.
Just go to to think of the path that you're going down. I guess one of the things I don't, I don't know that the number of bedrooms in the units really makes that big of a difference because if there were to be a compromise and say, okay, well, we'll just reduce all of the two out of the three bed places to two bedrooms rather than three bedrooms. It seems to me it doesn't really change anything about the density effectively. You can come up, uh, it seems to me thirty-two is an alarming number and extremely unlikely.
Yes.
But it also doesn't really solve anything to just say, we'll make any of the units have fewer bedrooms.
Yeah, no, that's.
The quantity of the buildings that's.
I I I think the road I'm going down and kind of um based on um council's input to is, you know, and the board is very aware of the the gray area. We can get into qualitative review. And there are elements of qualitative review in the land use ordinance and you know, and here we are somewhat and and six A one, this historically been one of them. And what I'm what I'm getting at is trying to put some quantitative position on a potentially qualitative review point. And so we're when we're talking about in the context of a thousand feet of the property or within the district, qualitatively, are there other point seven acre areas within the district that could have potentially up to thirty-two people, which we know probably isn't realistic, but twenty people? You know, twenty-two, twenty-four people? You know, and you know, when I'm looking at the the district map here, sure, we've got concentrations of um, homes in in the district, but you know, we're talking about on a single lot, you know, we're.
I guess I just encourage going to hearing the the um other argument because and and stick to the discussion of the number of units because I don't think that the number
Yeah, let's.
truly takes us any.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I would, I I would agree with that and got a little off topic there, but yes, let's let's hear the the other side of the tables calculations now.
Sure. I will, I'll do my best here. Uh, a few different documents that we referenced, so please bear with me. Um, I will say to the the bedroom issue, um, I think it's, uh, you know, as you noted, Mr. Chair, uh, there are qualitative and quantitative components to this analysis, I think. The the extent that you're evaluating whether this uh proposed use uh is compatible, ID does it conflict with the existing uses in the district or the surrounding area? Um, you know, does it harm those existing uses? I think the um looking at those questions of, you know, potentially thirty-two people, uh, you know, whether it's uh children, uh, in-laws, parents, cousins, you know, friends, um, not necessarily children, right? Um, it is an important thing to consider, especially in relation to the lot. Um, I know you're going to get to the parking um down the line. But uh talking about the uh the specific question here, um, simply put, I I guess I'll I'll start with my my thesis upfront. Um, and and as uh Mr. Johnson said, this is a this is a rounding issue fundamentally. Um, and whether you round up or round down, our position uh is that you must round down. Um, that's what's required here, uh, because you can't have fractional uh allowances, um, that then get kind of carried over into a larger calculation that then gets magnified out. Um, so I I would just refer you to the um, the July twenty-fourth submittal um that I provided that um attempts to break down this uh this distinction uh between um our view and the view before by the developer. Um, so I'm going to set to one side the question of the total lot area. Um, our position, um, as we have noted repeatedly, is that uh under the Luso, which is uh, you know, the subdivision ordinance, uh, looking at section five point two or five point one, refers refers you back to the Luso um in determining uh these questions of density. Under the Luso, the definition of lot area um includes the entire parcel uh subtracting out uh here roads, which is the relevant uh issue. And the right of way certainly qualifies as a road, probably with a point, a let a uh acre piece of the parcel that is clearly used to serve more than two lots. It is a road uh under the Luso. Um, our position is that the proposed driveway here will also constitute a road because it effectively serves more than two lots. Uh, this gets back to a fundamental question of are we talking about multiple lots here or not? Uh, I'm going to set that to the side though, because ultimately, you know, you're looking at this application. And our position is that even if you use the the maximum number here, the numbers still don't add up. So uh going by uh the thirty-nine thousand two hundred and four foot total lot area, um that stuff what we're we're talking about here. You then need to look at the minimum lot size uh for the district. Here, I think we all agree that it's ten thousand foot. Uh, you divide those two numbers, you get three point nine two zero four. That is three. Uh, you cannot have point nine uh lots. You can't have point nine units. If uh if this were a single um, you know, just looking at, you know, a single residence application, we wouldn't say, uh, okay, well, you know, you're at uh one point, you know, one point two, one point three. Okay, we'll round up to two. That's not how that works. We have three units uh that would be allowed here. So the density bonus is seventy-five percent. So you would take uh so three units times one point seven five is five point two five or five units. So that is at maximum what would be permitted on this lot flatly. Here, six are proposed. That is the application before you. Our position is that it cannot be approved on that basis quantitatively. I think that the qualitative question remains relevant here, but looking at just the numbers themselves. Uh, so again, you have, and this is using the maximum lot size number, there are about thirty-nine thousand square feet of total area. Divide that by ten thousand, you get three total units allowed. Three times one point seven five equals five point two five or five. The only way you get to the six point nine number that uh is used by the applicant is to roll over that point nine in the initial calculation of three point nine and multiply that out uh in the points, the one point seven five, which uh then gives you the six point eight six, round enough uh for the applicant to six point nine. Um, that is, that is simply not how zoning of the land use permitting looks. We don't talk about fractional people, fractional units. Um, we need to round down here. Their math rounds up, um, and applies incorrect. And I've been answering any specific question, yeah, with calculation.
Greg, would you like to speak to that?
Before he does that, can I can I just ask a question to clarify what I think I hear Attorney Burns? What's the reference point for the planning board as to whether you round up or round down? Oh, it's the same question the applicant.
So um again, we're looking at, so under the Luso, uh the minimum lot area is ten thousand square feet. That is one per ten thousand, right? So where we have a thirty-nine thousand square foot lot, that nine thousand of extra space doesn't get credited as a fraction of an allowable unit. If this were uh if this were just simply a non-workforce, if if we if we set the the density bonus aside, and we were just to look at this as a lot and they're requesting, you know, they're trying to see how many units that you get onto this lot. The number would be three. It's thirty thousand feet is the effective uh lot area that we're talking about here. So uh, if it were, if we set up the density bonus question, the answer would have to be three. We would not allow four units here. You're not allowed three point nine. It would simply be three. So to carry over that fractional piece uh in the density bonus would be inappropriate uh because you wouldn't credit that um as part of the initial density. The density of this lot is three. It is not three point five.
So um just a follow-up question, if I may. Uh, how do you deal with section five point seven point three? Subsection three, it says overall net density should be determined by the total number of proposed dwelling units in the total acreage, including open spaces and recreational areas within the subdivision. There there's a couple of places in five point seven point three where the applicant has submitted to the planning board for 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 you to address Attorney Burns. It would suggest you always use the full size of the parcel. It's the subject of the subdivision, the part of the workforce subdivision. So where where do you get a signal that you that you must round down when it keeps saying you may not round up, but you got to use the full size of the development? That's I'm 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 getting stuck with the notion you have to round that. So it doesn't seem to be a signal.
The reason that you have to round down goes back to, as I said, the basics uh math of any land use permitting decision. Um, we, so if uh so and and in fact, the developer ultimately does it themselves. Uh, you know, when they talk about the six allowable units here, their final number is six point eight six, right? There we, they're not, uh, there's no way they can propose point eight six units here. Uh, it would be incongruous to allow that to carry over to compound as you continue to multiply when the base density, which is the first number we need to look at, is three. Three point nine is not the base density.
Yeah. Andy, just to following the the rounding discussion here, what we're taught, the only element that's being rounded here is when you get to the unit calculator, the actual final result of the of the math here, and that's the unit. So you're taking the total lot area, you're taking the minimum lot size, you're getting. So you're taking the total lot area, you're taking the minimum lot size, you're getting. A number with, you know, point, you know, point nine two oh four. And which is resulting in three, and then you take that three units. And you're multiplying it by the workforce housing density units, and that's where he's getting at, the five units. So the rounding is only occurring once, and it's at the end of the equation.
Yeah, I just, I I looked at pages forty two through forty four as you guided us with the applicant. And I found that there were two different ways that they came to the bonus calculation, and it struck me that. Doesn't matter which way you do it, if you take the whole acreage lot size or you take the number of units. You come to the same conclusion, because I don't think they did the number of units with their bonus calculation on that page. Didn't they take the whole lot size?
On the last page, on page forty four. So they. They took the whole lot size thirty thirty nine two oh four, multiplied it by the one point seven five bonus for workforce housing. They they then, so their calculation is a little different, because then they take it to the total. Square footage available divided by the minimum. Square footage lot size ten thousand, and they got the six point nine. And what, you know, what's going on here? Is he's. They're doing it the same, but it's just a little cleaner with the. The base, the total lot area times density bonus, figuring out the. The fractional units and then rounding down to figure out whatever the allowable unit is.
So just to be clear, it's it's bouncy. I serve you. It's not my determination, but I think between Attorney Burns' argument. And the argument of the applicant in terms of how you apply the density bone, the issue is engaged. It's gonna have to be how you noodle through. How the ordinance directs you to apply it, and it strikes me that it's the difference between five and six units. And based upon the way I hear the board discussing this application. That's probably the place you should be is 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 it five or is it six? And I I can't, I can't tell you what you should determine. That's for you to determine, but I can tell you the standards. Don't speak to me that you either round up or you just take the whole parcel. And you use that as the basis for your balance calculation, and one may be cleaner from from a perspective. One may be a little bit messier because it's got a decimal point in it. I I don't see a clear signal in the ordinance, and that's why I think Attorney Burns and perhaps Mr. Musson is doing the same thing. They're using principles to inform how their interpretation may be the the better one. But again, I think it's fine for the board to wrestle with this. And continue the discussion, because I think that's at the core of this project. It's the density development, so.
I just want to clarify, not to make things more murky, but again, when. The argument that we're putting forward, arriving at five units, is to demonstrate that this application as proposed cannot move forward. As we noted, it's a middle. The total lot area consideration, in addition to other applicable components of the subdivision ordinance. I think would stand in the way of getting even to five, but we're, I'm, just for the purposes of this density conversation. The understanding of the basis of the developer's application is that. At least six units are allowed here. The answer is is simply it is not. And and that is what the math here is.
Right, but the scope of what the board is looking for on the density of development is what you're arguing on that. You're you're extending your argument into. Whether the application should be approved or denied. That's a question for the board, so I I leave it where you left it.
May I weigh in on our calculations?
Go for it, Kathy.
Um, I think that there is another section within the subdivision ordinance. In section five point one six point two, which talks about plan design requirements. And in the second section of that is the density issue and and paragraph A. And within that, there is the language, for the purpose of calculating density for subdivisions. That include workforce housing, the area of the entire parcel may be used, including wetland and steep slopes. Workforce housing will use the entire parcel. And it's that, as well as the section that Attorney Hamilton pointed out earlier in section five point seven. That had us basing our calculations on the amount of land, because the subdivision ordinance clearly and repeatedly states. It is the amount of land that is determining your density. You don't number, you don't figure out the number of. Units and then multiply that. They're looking at the whole land and in fact, make the point where. In some areas, you would not be calculating wetland or steep slopes. But for workforce housing, you are. So they are including everything, which is our driving force and why we were using. The the land mass in our calculations and how we arrived at that number.
This, Mr. Burns and then Greg.
So. I think it's important to. Chunk this out and be clear about what we're talking about. So the that provision of the ordinance. That says the entire parcel shall be used. The entire parcel is used in their calculation. So that is the thirty nine two oh four. That that is, that is part of our calculation as well to get to five. We would, we would argue that. That the the use of that language entire parcel, you still need to look at the total lot area, which again cuts out. The roads that are part of this lot, because under the Luso, that's that's what the language says. However, it it doesn't matter here. The the fact that the entire lot area is used. Let's say that it's, so it's used as opposed to cutting out the right of way and potentially. The subdivision road here. You still arrive at thirty nine thousand two hundred and four feet. The base density of that will still be three. And and that is not, you're not lopping off part of the parcel. It's simply that the the minimum requirement is ten thousand square feet per unit here, and that is three. If you have three point nine, if you have three point two, it simply remains.
Greg.
So I'm not gonna repeat what is the language of the ordinance when it says you're using the entire parcel first. If you're having a density bonus, that's clear. We're not gonna repeat that. But I do wanna take exception to two points who have been, which have been casually put out there. The definition of the road and the right of way needs to be subtracted. But I'm bringing your attention to the definition of a road on page eight dash one four. The idea is a road that separates in the right of way to the south, possibly a butter, is a road. It serves more than two blocks. Simply is true, this definition requires it to be constructed, okay? It's constructed to a point where it stops. Only serving two blocks. You can't say because the right of way exists on paper beyond. It says. A route or track consisting of a bed exposed mineral and gravel. We're not just talking about paper right of ways and qualified as roads, which way they're extrapolating to say, oh, that's a road. Let's not confuse it has to be constructed and it is not. Second ball, the idea that I wrote in the driveway, serving one lot, simply, we've known that before. We take an exception to that.
But if I, if I'm not mistaken, in the context of the calculations here. You're both using the same starting point. You're both using the thirty nine two oh four, which includes the right of way.
The footnote saying that we shouldn't be able to use that because it's a road that started off that conversation, we take the exception to it, because I don't think. That meets the definition of road, because that road is not constructed, and that's an important point to consider, particularly if it's on the record that that is a road. On the definition of road, so that is be constructed.
So that's kind of a side point, but I'm just trying to make sure we're talking about apples to apples here. And it seems like we are, because you're both starting with the same number, which is the lot in total.
Sure, but I also wanna make sure that we're going back to those issues. We have the opportunity to identify. That there was gonna be a future conversation about what is a road and not a road. And because a right of way serving the road is not the definition of road, road is constructed. Back to your question, we are starting with the same.
So it's from, from the math and the July twenty fourth. Submittal from the opposition and your your math and your July fourteenth. Submittal, it looks like it's apples to apples math. Other than just the rounding issue at the end of the calculation.
I'd also just like to ask, Greg, why do you, why are you saying that that's not constructed? About the neighbors use that right of way to get to their parking.
That's true, right? Serving more than two.
But you keep saying it's not constructed.
It is, but the definition of road is driveway is not serving more than two, and at the present time, that only serves loads two. Beyond that, it's not constructed.
The heel property was using it. So what's.
I I don't have any commentary on the road question. I think that's. Let me just ask Mr. Musson or Mr. Johnston the question of. How do you get a signal from this ordinance that you do anything but use the numbers as they. Layout in the calculations, and you neither round up nor round down. I I wanna see the signal in the ordinance that's giving you this sense that you have to round down. Or that you have to round up. The signal I see in this ordinance is you just take the numbers the way you find them and. Maybe a little messy, it may not be clean, but I don't see any signal. I I will give you a. A a opposing example that I think both of these representatives are familiar with. Bar Harbor in the context of affordable units has a rounding direction. It tells you when you round up or you round down. I don't find it in your landing, so that's all I'm saying. So I'd like to hear whether the applicant has a view on, is there a signal in the ordinance? I'm not finding it.
Andy, I believe Dan.
So, Andy, or Mr. Hamilton, sorry, I think that in the ordinance, there is no. Directive that you have to round down. And every section that deals with density for these types of projects deals with the entire property. So it doesn't tell you that you have to pause at a certain point and then calculate and round down and then add more. It just says. Here's the gross residential density of that property. So in five. Point one six point two, it talks about using the entire parcel. Oh, it doesn't say where you have to pause and where you should stop. It's trying to get a density. Area, and that's, we're not, I'm not arguing that we're not starting at the same point. It's a matter of where you pause to do the math, and there's nothing in the ordinance that says you have to stop here, round down, and then start it and start again. It says you have to take the entire parcel and calculate the density bonuses. I think seven, where it talks about density. Five point one six, where it talks about density. I also think it talks about face density, which is a really important. Termination that the base density, which is the number of units on a particular track of land. Is six. You can get six units on this parcel, no matter how you shape it.
I just wanna, handling for the record, Mr. Hamilton just asked a question. I just wanna make it clear, the applicant is not proposing. That we round up or anything. We agree that there is nothing within Mount Desert's ordinance that directs. Applicants or the board to round up or down in doing density calculation. We're doing simple math. We're no rounding at all. We're getting to a final conclusion and not adding a fraction, fractional unit.
It's the. Wish I was better with my math terminology, I guess, but. We're talking about a unit of measure here that a calculation is trying to result in. And it's a unit, and we're not talking about fractional units. We're talking about units. And so, you know, I I don't know if it's not, if maybe the discussion about rounding up and rounding down is relative. We're talking about how you classify a unit, and there are no fractional units. We we don't have three and a half units. We have three units. We don't have four and a half units. We have four units. And so the the math exercise is resulting in a unit of measure and just. Curiously, it's a, that unit of measure is a unit. And so when you're multiplying the workforce housing multiplier, the workforce housing multiplier is really to. Give you that density of development in the context of that unit of measure, which is a unit. And so you're multiplying that by the resulting unit from the calculation, the one point seven five times the. The result of the total lot size divided by the allowable, you know, size. In that district, and you're getting at the result of a total number of units benefiting from that. Multiplication. So I, it, what I'm getting at is like, I. I really don't think this is about rounding up and rounding down. It's talking about, you know. The unit of measure, and the unit of measure in this case is a unit, not, and it's a whole unit. And so it's, I understand it, I. Put my math classes on, you know, I I get both sides of how they're calculating it. But I think when you key it back to the ordinance and the workforce and just the in. The workforce housing density bonus calculation and what you're trying to result in. We're talking about a a whole unit of measure here, and that's a unit. And it seems like Mr. Burns' math is clear to that. Understanding of whole units than the applicant's math is.
So my notes may be inaccurate, but I wanna go to back to page forty four, because the note I took. Is step one is you determine the lot area. Step two is you take the minimum lot size in the VR one district. Step three is to do the density bonus. You take the lot area times one point seven five. And you come up with sixty eight thousand six hundred and seventy square feet. You then divided that by ten thousand square feet. And that gives you six point nine units. The applicant seems to agree. That you can't have point nine units, as you said, it's a whole unit. So as Mr. Burns does it at the front, the applicant does it at the back.
You're right.
So again, I think you're you're switching between five and six, and it's up to the board.
The the this, the statement of the seventy five percent in the gross residential density. So the seventy five percent applies to the gross residential density. So I I can see where you can, but I I don't, I don't. Do you think it's up to us? It is gross density of residents, not land. It's residence, the gross. That's residential density. Yeah, but I, it doesn't clearly say. Yeah, I I it just, it is not clearly stated. One way or the other, and we can go around and around and we can both argue, but I don't think that it there states.
But what I do like about what the planning board has done is it's got robust input as to the evidence to be evaluated. And now it's up to you, I think, in your deliberations to evaluate that.
Greg, one point that the board.
Yes, and then we're done after Greg's.
Under the density, it does actually tell you how to calculate. Section five sixteen two. Doesn't say you multiply the minutes by dwelling unit. That actually says. The density bonus, you know, is one point seven five shall be used against a square footage. Calculated. So if you look at that, it said Duke lines A and B of the minimum lot price standards. Those are multiplications of one point seven five. And the square footage of a lot, not one point seven five times a dwelling unit, which is the opposite. That is correct. That is a multiplier of one point seven five. Times the ten thousand square foot, so it's it's the one seven five and an area, not a dwelling unit.
What what section is that?
Five sixteen two. The units, the units are important because it's telling to you to use a square foot.
So I'm gonna.
The density box, because when you go to column A in three point five, it's gonna be a square foot unit. It's not gonna be a dwelling unit, but it's a square foot.
So I'm just gonna read that out loud. It's section five point sixteen point two subsection two density. So I'm just gonna read that out loud. It's section five point sixteen point two subsection to density. And um point A talks about that the density of the subdivision shall not exceed the density requirements. Of the zone which it is located, which it isn't. Density is calculated by applying the minimum lot sizes to the developable portion of the lot. And for the purpose of calculating density for subdivisions that include workforce housing. They an area, the entire parcel may be used. Including wetland and steep slopes. Workforce housing will use the entire parcel. Density requirements and density bonuses for workforce housing shall be calculated from lines A and B of the minimum lots. Stand standards and lose a dimensional requirements in three, three, six.
So that's that's telling you to be density bonus, which we know was one point seven five. Is multiplied by square footage, because that's all you'll find in. Lines A and B of the dimensional standard. Now, the ordinance hasn't been updated to. Play three point five is three point seven five. It's a one seven five and the square footage.
One last comment from Mr. Burns.
Uh Mr. Chair, with respect, this this issue does beg the same question we've been talking about over. That clause of the ordinance refers you back to the same user provisions we've been talking about from the beginning. It's referring you to the base density allowed in that zone according to lines A and B of that that in system. We're still talking about a base density of ten thousand square feet per unit. That the. The calculation that the applicant is having you undertake is not borne out by this plain language. It's simply referring you back to. For reference, what minimum lot size you are supposed to be applying here, which is ten thousand square feet per lot. Um and and that's exactly what the stat is. You still get back to this this fundamental question of. Are you allowing a fractional unit in your calculation of the base density? I I will note that the uh that for me, materials we provided you conclude. Statements from those uh an individual who was involved in the drafting of this ordinance who takes umbrage with. Using a fractional unit as part of that calculation.
I'm gonna object for purposes of the record. If I've made clear to the board that what one member of a committee thinks. Is not what the plain text of the ordinance says. Stick with the text of the ordinance. Don't go off script with. What one individual may think that language may mean. That's not proper construction of the ordinance.
Part of the record and the board can evaluate it on on that basis.
So here we are. It's either six and five units based on two. Calculations submitted um. I know counsel has issued the. The warning shot about, you know, qualitative discussions and I think there is some. Quantitative justification of the qualitative. Discussion too, and I still. Still wanna chat about that a little bit, but um. Let's hear from you guys. What? How do, where do you think we're at? How do you feel? Need a five minute recess.
Can I put the board down?
Yeah, okay, Gail, you're on. You know what it? And I I know Andy's gonna sigh when I say this, but I I still feel this is too much on too little. And, you know, okay, what does that mean? Well. Between opposition and applicant that talks about one unit. Well, you know, it I'm gonna humanize this a little bit and I'm sure he's sighing again as I'm saying this, but um. You know, I'm. Okay, we gotta go on mute. You know, I'm. I'm on Neighborhood Road year round. I see the ebb and flow of it. Uh I see all the good, bad and the ugly and it's. Mostly almost all good. And um. When I look at the context of this application in that district. I am not seeing this kind of density anywhere. Yes, I see homes packed together in Sylvan City and I see. You know, things, you know, down by us and neighborhood house and yes. You know, there's a broad area in the middle of next to nothing, but I'm just not seeing this density on a single lot. Anywhere. And I don't know in the broad terms of. The planning board's task of representing the residents of this town, how we can say that that kind of. That number of people on a lot that size is compatible with the district it's in. You know, it's just too much. And I mean, we've probably received. Oh, my gosh, fifty plus letters about this and everybody is saying the same thing practically and I just. I I would would have. Hoped that the applicant would have processed that kind of. Feedback into more of a tangible shift in the application, but that's. But they, you know, but the reality of is is that and and the quantified pro- parameters. Of the subdivision ordinance and the land use ordinance and um the state statute forty four oh four just. Isn't recognizing that, you know, and and they're adhering to the nuts and bolts. They need to adhere to. Quantitatively in many in in everything we've looked at so far. So. I just wanted to put that out there and acknowledge that the board has. I know you guys have read every single piece of correspondence we've received, you know, and everybody's saying the same thing. And we can't just sweep that under the rug for a, you know, um, you know, a a math calculation and. There I said it, Andy.
Well, let me, let me just engage it because there's a couple of things that you said, which. Takes the board outside of its role. And so I'll just, I'll I'll trim you up just a little bit there. Um. And I I do think the board is wrestling nicely with this question. And I don't think. There's a magical answer to five versus six. I think it's gonna come down to your judgment. As to how the standards apply the application. I don't care how many letters you get. I don't care what volume of evidence you have. Um the the key question is, how do you apply these standards to this application? It's a lonely place to be. It's like where judges occupy and where boards occupy. It's the space where you're just taking the standards of ignorance. And applying them to an application. And lots of people could say you should apply it this way, you should apply it that way, including me. What you should do is decide for yourself what the language means. And make sure you apply it. Well, the reason I'm comfortable with where the board is on this compatibility standard is. It's a very subjective standard and the law court has been very clear. Don't use things like qualitative and subjective standards that would allow you to substitute your judgment for the legislative body.
Absolutely.
So the fact you're down to density of development and you're in the quantitative space. I think that's a good place to be. And I think. This question of what signals the applicant should get. Is ultimately the planning board signals. Those are the signals that really count in this process. Because there's always gonna be views on either side of a given land use standard. As to whether it's too much or too little. It's really that lonely space of the planning board where you have to say, just as a judge will have to say. Uh in review of whatever determination. Was the planning board's decision based upon their application of the standards? Look, this discussion tonight to me is an example for how you have this kind of conversation. So you're not gonna get loud sighs from me, except I don't think it's your popularity. I don't think it's whether you need to be representative. Of the community like the select board needs to be. They're the ones that are elected. You're appointed to do the job of applying the standards to the application. And I think you're wrestling well with that. So I I yield back.
I I just have a question. Looking at it, uh generally, we're looking at the code. Where. People are allowed to do what fits in the code. This is, the wording of this is a bonus. You get a bonus job. It's not part of your pay. It's something that your employer grants you, gifts you. Extra. So as we review. And I, you know, the the town has its standard of how dense. They want things and this is the bonus that you get for workforce housing. So. Um, you know, and there's a fifty percent. It's and then you get up to seventy five percent. If it's a hundred percent, you know, there you're working with a developer in most cases. They're trying to make the most money out of their development. This is a. You know, going along that line of thinking as they're developing it. They refer to it as you may grant this bonus. So if we say we'll grant you five units rather than six units. It's a, we're giving them a bonus over. The ten thousand. And I know Noel say, but you can do duplexes and stuff, but the the general is. Ten thousand square feet per dwelling, per single family unit. And then there are ways to develop. Additionally, but. Like I said, I kind of question whether we accidentally doubled up, but I guess it's the, it's a bonus. So. Do we need to totally settle on the idea of which way it's calculated or can we just say? Five feels better than six. We're giving you a bonus. We'll give you. You know, that's. That's plenty. It's more than fifty percent. It's not the full seventy five percent. Um because it's bonus that we have that. Do we have that? Leverage to make that call because it's not hard in. Is it hard? Is a bonus hard in the code? Or is it something that we're granting? There are lots of cases where we're granting, where we're saying, yes, we all feel comfortable with that. And the code allows us to.
So in five point seven point three and five point sixteen point two. The legislative body is giving this board. Not just the discretion, but also the direction to apply bonus if it's workforce housing. Do you remember that conversation we had where we asked the applicant, do you really intend? That this is a workforce housing subdivision? They came back after consideration. And said, this is a workforce housing subdivision. So when I apply the plain language of five point sixteen point two. And five point seven point three. I agree that the concept of a bonus sounds like that's discretionary. You can give it or not. But the discretion has been exercised by the legislative body, not by you. Okay, and so the discretionary bonus has already happened in the plain text of the ordinance. Now the question is, and you you and the chair have have engaged this. I think quite well, Mary, and that is. It does, does net residential density? Mean it's density in terms of units? Uh and do you take the calculation of whole units at the front end as Mr. Burns has argued? Or you take it at the back end as Mr. Mossen has argued? And I think those two positions are there for you. I I don't see really clear signals on that question, but I would say if you were to use mathematics. Um, uh, three point nine point two is actually closer to four than it is to three. Why isn't the next whole unit? Four instead of three. Similarly, if they're saying six point nine is where they come out. But they're saying, but you gotta have a whole unit at the end of the calculation. That's six. But. I really think this board is engaging the community's standards in this ordinance, the plain text of the ordinance. To the application well. And I would just continue your discussion and you decide. Is it five or is it six? So. Tracy. Not to put you down.
Oh, yeah. So uh I see the math both ways. And um. I do understand the stance that you spoke about. Where the. Yeah, it seemed more in keeping with the rest of the. Neighborhood to go to go with the fewer of of the five. But. Uh, I am under. I can't, I don't have, I just, I don't have a. I don't have a good stance right now. Rounder.
Um, I think that um the calculation is to get units. And I think the bonus should be applied to units. Not a decimal. So I I I think the ordinance is saying is five.
Yeah, I'd agree with Dave on that. And again, I. Paint that into the larger context of the district and when. You know, in section six, eight, one is so challenging at times because. Andy, correct me if I'm mistaken, but there is a qualitative error about. Six point one.
Well, there's definitely a qualitative error about six A one.
And and we and the board has had. Many different applications before us where we've tried to. Stick on the quantitative track, but it's just within the context of six, say, one, it's tough. And I can't. You know, for me personally, I can't just dismiss. You know, that character of six, eight, one qualitative character of it. And I just, and in the. The context of. Compatibility, you know, just where we're at. For me, I'm still struggling. I'm and it's not our job to tell the applicant if it's five or. Four or three or six. That's.
We're not, no, but let me comment there because um I think Attorney Burns was doing his job trying to extend the point about density development to. This applicant, this application can't be approved. It is the applicant's prerogative. To listen to this discussion. Clearly, you're not gonna get through all of six A, six B, six C. I'll be surprised if you get through six A one tonight. So you're sending a signal. To the applicant and the interested parties. And so it's incumbent upon the applicant to decide what they wanna do with it. If they wanna straight up determination on the application they've got, they're entitled to it. If they want to amend and come back, they're entitled to it. But you are not deciding tonight whether to approve or deny their application.
Yes.
All you're trying to decide is how do you read the ordinance? And I, again, I think. The tension just within the board is good. Because you're gonna figure out what makes sense overall. As a deliberative body. And the best thing about this meeting is. This isn't sidebar conversations. This is at the meeting, you're having a deliberative discussion.
So if.
Um, go ahead. The other comment that I have, without real clear direction. There isn't any real clear direction. I think you take a conservative approach. I think that's um.
No, the ordinance doesn't say that either, David, with respect. That's that's just your philosophy. That's okay. Personal philosophies enter into this, I guess, but um I think you've gotta apply the standards to the application.
Can I just? Try to summarize what I think I'm hearing from you guys. So would what? What I think I'm hearing from you, Dave, is is five versus six. And I'm not really hearing much. Beyond that, and that's. That's fine. I mean, you know, I'm I'm hearing numbers from you, five, not six. Tracy. Still wayfinding.
Yeah. I'm laughing back to even if we tell them. Okay, we feel. We feel that in the workforce housing. You gotta go. With the approach of he calculated out five. They can still turn around and say, okay, so we've got thirty nine thousand feet. And ten per unit. And you can have a primary, secondary or two duplexes. On each of those, so they could have. Um, they could change this around so that it was still six units under that scenario. Uh I went and I guess I'm. Uh it circles back to this, the um compatibility with the. Neighborhood. Uh and and that the the density been questioned there too. Um, I really wish that. Everybody recognizing that we really need workforce housing. That um they have made. A great number of changes and adaptations to people's requests in this neighborhood. And I think they've. And I think they've overall done a very good job. That if we could come to the agreement of saying five units. That it could be put to peace. That everybody would back, like, that, that's a good compromise on their behalf. We need workforce housing and this is where. Three sixty-five owns this lot. This is where they're proposing to put it. Just not have everything go to court, you know, like. But granting, recognizing people's argument, we are here to listen and to try to create. Peace within our town, you know, and so if we. We choose to see it this way, if we could just say to them, you know, the, the density regardless, the town feels that this. There's clear indication the town feels this is too much density. Make it five. I can understand where they don't want to back off, but the argument is just going to continue, you know, that they're just going to get hammered about the next thing that, that. In fact, people don't want, this is just the first argument they're going to make against it and they're going to keep on. There's got, there's got to be a reason why we're, we're recognizing all these lumber, all these letters and arguments that. Okay, we're, we are making peace. We're, we're going to say, yes, you, you can only have five, but. The concessions would make, let's, let's be reasonable at this point about allowing this project to go forward now.
I hear you. And I, um, I couldn't agree more about the need for workforce housing, hundred percent. Myself, I've been trapped in the, the housing infinite loop here and it's, it can, it's awful. And we need it, we need it everywhere online.
They're working with the houses there to try to maintain things in the neighborhood.
I think that's fantastic, you know, I think that it's not the board's purview though. To tell an applicant, hey, it's five or.
I'm not really telling the applicant. I'm just voicing things so the public hears. We're trying really hard here.
Doing a great job.
We're gonna make a peaceful neighborhood.
Get the gold star again and, um. So I, I think, you know, from a board's position on compatibility, we should not be saying, hey, it's five or six. You know, we're looking at the, the totality of, um, the six A one. And, um, compatibility as defined by the components of compatibility. And just again. You know, it's hoping to get maybe a summary from Meredith about her position on this, but I. I'm sure we'll get to that as we have a finding and, um, vote on six A one. But, um, again, I'm, I'm just of the opinion, hey. We need, we need workforce housing, you know, the, you know, they're aiming in a. In a positive direction, but it's just too much on too little. And it's not, you know, the board's. Purview to tell them where to go with that, you know, but other than just convey a, you know, a quantifying. Finding and conclusion of law. So that's. So I, I think we need to. Think about working towards a motion on six A one and. I don't know if.
I have a sense that, uh, Mr. Chairman, that it would be good to give a five minute break. Because I, I think, uh, a, a motion is possible. Um, but I think, um, it'd be good to just give people the mental break. On the board to, to, to just have a chance to, to collect their thoughts and then come back. This is just about.
I won't argue with that.
I think it's a good call.
So a motion for a five minute recess.
I, I will make that motion.
I'll second it. All those in favor? Five minute recess. All right, I'll call. Mountain Desert Planning Board Meeting back to order. Here we are. Andy, could I first ask a question about, um, where does the discussion of density of development? Also come up?
So your subdivision ordinances has been cited many times by both, um. Um, sides of the question, uh, tonight, it's five point seven point three. And five point sixteen point two and the whole notion has. Number of land office, Meredith stated, because the. It, it's the application of just density bonus concept and. I, I see a creative tension in the board's discussion that I don't think has to be resolved tonight. Because I think it's coming back to you as you go down through the section five standards. Five point two, you go to five point three, um. And, and, and sequence right down to five point seven. Look at what five point seven is tied with lots of density. So, um, you, you're, you're coming back to this question and I think. Um, the board did a really good job tonight. I'm not trying to decide. The core question, but to have a really good engaged discussion about it. Um, and I would say that the challenge with the workforce density provisions of the subdivision ordinance. Is that they get integrated into your overall decision and it felt. To me that you were making good progress with six A one until. You, you were trying to calibrate, how does, how do the, the, the section five point seven and five point sixteen standards relate to? Compatibility. And I have to agree with the chairman. I don't love the way the standard got written, but there is a qualitative component and there's a quantitative component. Where I think the board should go, and I think you're clearly signaling where you may be heading. Is to reserve the, 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 the tension between five versus six. And decide that at a later time. I don't think you need to decide that thing. What you should do however, as to six A one, is to say that you're reserving on density of development. As to both qualitative and quantitative considerations, because I think they both do enter in. And I think you're going to come right back to it in five point seven. And, and the way you've been toggling between the subdivision ordinance and the land use ordinance, I think is the right way. Five point two, fortunately or unfortunately, depending upon what your view is. Directs you to look at local ordinance services. Those include the land use ordinance standards. So you're necessarily toggling between subdivision ordinance and land use ordinance. So. I don't know if that's helpful to you, but I, I tried to answer your question.
I feel like there's, um. There's still parsing we need to do on the density of development discussion and I just want to make sure that we've got. Quantitative points in, in the ordinance to do that still.
I believe you did.
Mr. Pelagi.
Thank you, uh, the chair, um, at the break, um, we had a, that on behalf of the applicant, had a chance to chat. Um, we've been listening to the discussion that the board has and we propose that the, uh, proceedings be tabled. We put a pause and I'd like, I think that we'd like to go have a chance to, uh, uh, to, to talk in more detail about the information that we've heard tonight. Um, and, and, uh, while presenting to you. Um, and, uh, you don't have to take me up on that. I think our calculations are right. I think that our numbers are, are the way the ordinance is written, but I'm. Hearing what the board's saying, um, and I'd like to take, I think it requires a worthwhile step and respectful ask for that.
Yeah, I think a perfectly, uh, appropriate suggestion. I think it's, it's now more a question of how would the board like to implement? That suggestion if it's acceptable.
Do we, do we have a motion to accept the applicant's request to table the application? Tableing the reviews. Yeah, sorry.
If they ask to table, then you isn't that up to them, not really up to us?
Yeah, do we have to have a binding on that or?
Is it, the, the management of the proceedings are for the board and the, the applicant certainly gets to make the request. Um, just as an interested party could make a request, but procedurally, the determination is yours. And I think it's, it's, it's perhaps sensible in light of the fact that, um. The applicant's basically saying it's heard some feedback and input from the board and it wants to consider that and what that means. So. I think you can act on that, but I think somebody should make a motion to table the review of the application from the board.
Uh, and then we'll need to establish a date certain.
That's the other point I was going to go to.
Yeah.
Exactly right.
So how does the?
Make a motion to.
Well, let's ask the applicant though. I mean, are we, would we be tabling to a date certain?
I think we would be tabling to a date certain, uh, with the information submitted like we had prior. Um, that we agree on a date that each side would submit, uh, information that would inform the next steps.
So the only question I have as counsel for the board is. Why do you need more information? I mean, you get the information. The, the difficulty of the deliberations is the, is the, is the tension. In the review of the application against the standards. Um, if the public hearing is closed. It's certainly appropriate. The board can decide they want additional submissions. Um, I'm, I'm just.
Well, what happens if there is a, a shift in the, in the submission?
I see. Okay, yeah. You, you're helping Mr. Chairman understand, um, what the suggestion for table, you know, so, okay, yep. Yeah, you'd want to table to a date certain and you'd want to be able to give both sides the opportunity to submit information. Um, because the applicant may want to, um. Provide a, a supplement. And the counsel for interested person would want to have the opportunity to respond to that. So. I would confer with the code officer and with the board secretaries to the dates. Cause you're going to need to have enough times if you're here to be applicant, counsel for interested person or the board. All, all, all three need to be kind of synchronized now, but this is the easy part, um, compared to. The, the tough stuff that you were addressing with just about five minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Burns had a question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm confused on what information would be required at this juncture, given the records, the road and you're in the middle of your deliberations. Um, they've not directed us to provide you with any additional information. Um, so I'm, I, I guess I would have some concern at allowing the, uh, uh. Allowing for kind of the indeterminate or unlimited, uh, ability to supplement the record here when there's no. Question of the board's pose to the applicant or any of these parties. I just, I, 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 I don't oppose table and I'm just looking confused as to what the applicant is, uh. Uh, proposing in terms of allowance for submission of additional information in the absence of any direction from the board on any specific issue.
Mr. Pelagi, would you want to?
We're going to talk.
Does the applicant want to be able to, um, supplement? As a possibility?
We're going to have a, a discussion about, um, about whether we want to supplement information. We're going to discuss the plan as a whole. We're going to discuss, um, all of the issues that the, that the board has discussed today. And, uh, we want the opportunity to, to, to do that. Um, I, I, if we want to submit something else, I can certainly ask for permission, um. In, in, in advance, or I can submit it where the board, the board can, uh, meaning choose to reject it.
I mean, Andy, what happens if we just tabled it to a date cert and left it in that?
So just, just, just so I can play this out in my mind, because I'm thinking about logistics, but I don't need to, as you suggest, Mr. Chairman. What's the next day that would be likely? From the perspective of all parties, because that's the way all parties have been participating. Scheduling is done mutually.
Uh, two weeks from today is.
No, you're going in October.
You're going into October. When, when's the first one in October? Eleventh. And then after that, it's October. Twenty fifth. Twenty fifth.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
No.
So is this the only item again you want on the agenda?
Yeah, so we, we have to, um. Do we have any sense of applications at this point?
No, because the submission deadline is not till early October, so I won't know.
Yeah.
Wait, this is now we got through a portion of item one, I think you should have this, the only item on the agenda.
Yeah.
Do you ever have a special meeting and not have other people wait for applications?
So I'm just going to say aloud, the twenty fifth is terrible for me. I've got, I got, I got a major work item. It's got to be filed.
Okay. Okay, so they're, they're, they're saying that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So the motion would be to table to October eleventh.
Okay, okay. All right, I make a motion to, uh, table this issue to October.
So, sorry. So, again, this is the only item on the eleventh, so anybody that's going to submit, they'll go. The last, the next meeting is September twenty seventh. They will be able to go to October twenty.
Can, can we, can we gauge that? At the submittal deadline for the eleventh and perhaps we have to have a special hearing for.
Do you want me to wait to see if we get out?
Yeah, and if we do, then let's consider making a accommodation for a special. Any accom, any application for everyone.
In this proceeding, I agree. So for the submittal deadline for the eleventh, I'll go over this.
But to be clear, you're saying that people who submit things for the, oh, people, other. Projects that submit for the eleventh will make a special date for them.
Yes.
This will be on October eleventh. We have to have a date certain.
What's the typical timeframe for submittal? For two weeks? Okay. So that would take you to the twenty eighth of September.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a question about process.
Yes, let's just finish this discussion and then I'll recognize you.
So submittal, if there's going to be any, will be by September twenty eighth. By noon, submittal by noon, uh, both sides.
Yeah.
Okay.
But weren't we just talking about just? Uh, I wasn't clear on the submittal thing, Andy. I mean.
So, so here, here's my thought. The applicant has no signal as to whether they're going to submit anything. So all I'm saying is if they want to submit for the eleventh, so that you can consider it on the eleventh, they have to submit by the twenty eighth. So it's kind of a conditional submittal deadline. They may have no relevance. They may have nothing to submit and they say just resume the review. If there's anything to submit, you have to submit by September twenty eighth, but no.
We would object on the grounds that we wouldn't have any opportunity to review or respond prior to the run of that deadline. Again, we're confused as to what, if anything, that they were going to be requesting or receiving in terms of a supplemental.
Mr. Burns is pregnant in this conversation that there is a question about the density of development.
Yes.
I think you can figure it out and you're being a little bit naive.
I can't, I can't. Unless, unless the applicant is withdrawing their application.
They don't have to withdraw.
Or with the application as well.
They do not have to withdraw. They could amend or they could stand on the existing application. You, you don't determine process for the board.
No, but, but we do have an opportunity to respond if they're going to supplement the record with additional material, the argumentation as to the density question. Which has been fully briefed, I think twice now and it's felt for two hours. We would like opportunity if they're going to provide more information to the board on this issue. That does the process.
No, due process is for the applicant primarily and also for the interested persons. And what you can do is if you think there's going to be a submittal, you could call up. Attorney Pelagi and ask the question, you can have a submittal, uh, by, by the twenty eighth. If so, tell me so I can be prepared to respond at the same time. You can have a submittal uh, by, by the twenty eighth, if so, tell me, so I can be prepared to respond at the same time.
Mr. Pelagi?
From the applicant's perspective, I don't care when Mr. Burns submits something, as long as the board has time to, to look at it, okay? He wants time, but I don't care. What I, what I want to be able to do is to, is to help the board through this process. I, I want us to have a chance to, to get together um, without, with more than a five minute break. Um, and, and we'll see where we are, if Mr. Burns wants more time, and it's okay with the board, it's okay with Mr. Hamilton, we on the pair.
To me, you can take doubt out of the room based upon what Attorney Pelagi has said, I think, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. If they're going to submit as applicant by the twenty eighth, as he said, give him more time, give him till the following Thursday, October fifth. And then you'd be in order for the eleventh, and then the board would have materials, so that it's got both the applicants as well as the interested persons.
There you go.
Yeah.
Those are October fifths.
Yep.
Is there a time?
By noon.
By noon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, got that motion ready, Meredith?
October eleventh, I think is all I left off, I, I make a motion to.
I, I still have a question, Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Millstein? What's your question?
Want to be clear. So just for the purpose of clarity, um, the uh. The application right now is for six units. Can the applicant come back and amend that to five units? Or do they have to submit an entire new application, which has to go through the entire completion process?
Why have they answered that?
Ha- happy to respond very simply uh, for the board. Um, the applicant has choices, it can make, it can stand on the existing application at six, it can amend to five. Um, or, or it could do something different. It, it's, it's really the applicant's application to either stand on or to amend. And the board is doing a continuation review, so I hope that's responsive, Mr. Millstein.
Thank you so much, Andy.
You're welcome.
Back to that motion.
I make a motion to continue this meeting to the date certain of October eleventh.
With the submittal deadline of.
Applicants' submittal deadline of the twenty eighth by noon, and interested persons' deadline of the fifth by noon.
Yes, that's what I said.
Tracy Keller, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Hey, all those.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, that's.
Yeah.
For your patience.
Yeah.
Feel like with everybody saying at once, I think we got to say, are any of you opposed to? Because we all.
Yes. Anybody opposed?
Yeah.
None heard? So we need a motion to continue to adjourn. Right, so a motion to adjourn.
In this particular session.
I second.
All those in favor? Hi, any opposed? All right, we're done.